And we will call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Changes or additions to the agenda, we've got some. Number 11 budget review fiscal year 2022 is going to be tabled. And number eight authorize an ARCA fund committee is also going to be tabled. Let's uh let's have everybody go around and say their name and rank to the record.
Sarah Hopper.
If you've got some of the officers.
Dave Yellows, select board.
Dave Barlow, treasurer, Matt Maxwell, town administrator. Prine.
Kate Fletcher, delinquent tax collector and assessing clerk.
Ah, Prine Ben, planning and administration school director.
Carrie Keenan, resident.
Scott Brier, select board.
Eptengway, town clerk, town bookkeeper.
Thanks, everybody. Uh, do we have any public comment tonight? Okay, Kate, you're up.
Okay, do you want me, you're, what do you want with?
Yeah, that's fine. Uh, you want to come on camera?
Microphone range is good.
Yeah.
Is this, where should I go there?
Yeah, just as long as.
Okay.
Scott and Dave can hear you.
Um, so I'm coming for a variety of reasons that have to do with the delinquent tax collection. And I think I gave in your handout, you would see just an example of the letter that was sent to everyone that slated for tax sale. Um, I use this example because the Vermont statute that was passed this year in 2022 allowed for um the HAB or the Lamont Housing Assistance Program to assist people or residents and uh in need, um, so their properties would not go to tax sale. So by statute, every resident would have to, a property owner would have to get such a letter that was slated for the tax sale. And so our attorney mailed those letters to the 12 people that were on the list. And I use this example because this particular parcel has been an issue since before I became the delinquent tax collector. So what I'm asking the select board is for permission to bring this to the Board of Abatement. Or it could go to tax sale like it has in the past, but nothing, nothing materialized.
And what's the abatement going to do?
The abatement would take care of these taxes, abate them. Because the dilemma being, the parcel is owned, it's an unlanded mobile home.
Yeah.
Owned by Gerard and Mary P T. They have been contacted by myself and told me flat out that they would not pay these taxes. It is their daughter's mobile home. So it's a question of does the town want to pay to remove this mobile home?
She made two separate comments. You said uh that Gerard owns the uh mobile home.
No, Elizabeth Bahina owns the mobile home.
She's the daughter.
These two people own the parcel, Gerard and Mary P T.
So we have no way to put a lien on them.
Correct.
Yeah.
Would have done that already if that were the case.
There's no way, there's no way for the town to put a lien on the property.
Not legally, no. I talked with both Brian and Kristen about this.
Without zoning, there's no way we have any authority to stop people as like doing a rental on their property of a mobile home, correct?
That is correct, yes.
How much does the amount do, Kate?
Um, I just calculated interest today, but prior to today, one thousand one hundred six dollars and eighty-three cents. Which goes since 2015 and to now.
Is the mobile home still there?
Yes, it's been abandoned. The owner lives in Texas. I came here about two months ago and we discussed this and it's still something.
Why? I think you, I think we should allow you to bring it to the Board of Abatement. We should try to just get it weaved off and cleaned off the books.
I think it's the cheapest option myself. Because to remove this mobile home and to dispose of it would be much more costly. But again, that's not my call.
No, that'll be the Board of Abatements, but does that even qualify for one of the options for the Board of Abatement to even look at this property? Because they've just abandoned the property. Usually Board of Abatement is when there's an issue that you know, either with the tax amount or they had a fire or something of that extent that the homeowner is looking for reimbursement back from. Um, this is something entirely different where the people have just abandoned it. Isn't it normally through delinquent or the tax sales where the town would probably just take ownership of this mobile home or go back against the property owners who has this mobile home on their property? To have them pay that amount that to do or to get rid of the mobile home?
This is the complete recommendation of the attorneys. This is what is done in all of the other towns that have similar situations. Again, it's up to the Board of Abatement as to whether or not they want to accept this. But unlanded mobile homes are a dilemma for not just the town of Coventry.
Yeah.
So our other option is to have it go to tax sale. Nobody bids out of the town, bids a dollar, wins the thing. We haul it to the landfill, we get it, we get it um for free probably, you know, but we'd have to take different things out of it and they would probably crush it and dispose of it.
Correct.
Or adverse possession. If Gerard's allowing the law, allowing the situation without complaint.
They have Finn because it's their daughter. It it doesn't make a difference to me, but if it goes to tax sale like it has in the past, it's not anything that that anyone bids on and the town I'm sure doesn't want it, but it's you know, this is why I'm bringing it to the select board because it's your decision.
I'll probably end up agreeing with you, but at the end of the day, a way to make that property valuable is what I just said, adverse possession. If Gerard isn't uh complaining about that property uh being on his land, you could theoretically maybe sell that property.
You you can't because it's an unlanded mobile home.
We don't own, we won't own the property. We'll own the, we'll own the shit building that's on it.
Oh, that's all you own.
In in theory, you'll own a lot.
Well, if we put a bunch of.
If he's saying, if he's saying, yeah, that's my land and I've allowed my daughter to do that.
Uh huh.
And I'm not complaining against my daughter and I'm not going after rent from my daughter. Then he is allowing her to have adverse possession of that land. I'm not going to argue the point because it doesn't really matter to me, but.
No, I I agree with.
That is an option that that wouldn't make the property a valuable commodity for a tax sale. But if this is a better option, let's go with it and get it done.
Kate, what do you recommend? I mean, you know this field better than me. What do you recommend the town do?
Well, I don't, I don't know the field of adverse possession and I'm not an attorney. So I think, you know, I'm basing and I can certainly share the emails back and forth that I've had with uh Brian Monahan's office and with Kristin Seamus. Because again, I I don't believe that's an option or I think we would have, we would have, we would have done that already. I mean, obviously the parcel itself is the value.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're easily gonna just, if we were to buy this prop, buy the trailer in a tax sale, I I don't believe we'd end up with any property easily.
No, I'm not saying it was going to be easy, but it does put a value to the property. The easiest way for us will be go to the the abatement room. So I'm just going to go with that if you're up for it.
Okay. You want to make the motion and I'll second?
Uh, what is my motion reading? That we send it to the Board of Abatement?
Uh, yeah, the Bahina parcel.
Make a motion, we send the Bahina parcel to Board of Abatement.
So move. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And I just wanted to mention, so tentatively depending upon whether or not there are any applications to be have for these properties that are slated for tax sale. Uh, we've set September twenty-second, which is a Tuesday, I, no, September twenty-seventh, pardon me, twenty twenty-two as our tax sale date. It's normally starts at 10:00 AM. And right now I have 12 parcels slated.
Okay.
Twenty-seven, September twenty-seven. Sorry, I said twenty-second, but it's the twenty-seven. Too many twos, twenty-two.
I'm all set.
Okay. Yeah. I'm sorry? Oh, it has to be worn. The reason it's this far out is it has to be in the newspaper for three separate publications.
I got you.
There's a lot of statutory rules before tax sale can be held.
Fair.
Yeah. Okay, that's it. Any questions?
Any questions, Kate? Thanks, Kate.
Thank you.
All right, the next one up is Renee Falconer, unplanned dogs on Hancock Hill. Uh, Renee had some, picked up some dogs and there was no place to, no place would take them or there, every place was full, so she was keeping them at her house and would like us to uh reimburse her thirteen dollars a day for the days that she had the dogs.
What she did, she ended up um recovering two dogs. This is another side effect from COVID where everybody went out and either purchased dogs that were bred in the backyard or went to um rescue shelters and ended up adopting dogs. They've come to the point where they don't want the dogs versus them bringing it to the shelter. The shelters are full, so the shelters are not taking in any other dogs. They're just taking off the dogs' collars and tags and just dumping them side of the road for them to be called up um by the local town, pound keepers and whatnot. Renee did go pick up two of these dogs. Um, we're assuming that they weren't living together. She was able to rehome one of the dog. She had placed it out there on Facebook for almost two weeks. If anybody knew who these dogs were, nobody came back to claim them. So she did rehome one dog. The other dog, um, she has the back in contact with the local shelters. It's just at this point in time, they are so full, but they do have her on the waiting list for that dog to be able to go back in. Um, so at this point, it's either her or sending it over to the Oasis Kennels, which we have done in the past, but Oasis Kennels actually charges double that amount per day charge that we would have to pay. So Renee is willing to go ahead and keep the dog until the shelter contacts her to say, hey, we haven't opened them, bring the dog to us. And we would just reimburse her the thirteen dollars per day versus paying the twenty-six to oh, to Oasis Kennels.
Is it a licensed dog?
Uh, we do not have any way of being able to detect that. And where some of these dogs are located, even though they may be picked up in Coventry, it could be a dog that was on the border from Derby, could be a dog that was on the border from um Irisburg, from Orleans, from Irisburg, from all over, so there's just no way of telling without having actual tags.
And they check to see if the dogs have been chipped?
Uh, yes, they do check that. That's their first recourse. And no, they are not chipped.
So can we euthanize the dog?
Oh, my God.
Instead of paying.
I mean.
Instead of paying.
Technically, right now, there are a lot of rescue shelters. Um, that is starting to become a very big prominent thing, which is unfortunate for the dogs because they don't deserve that.
Oh, no.
But it's just such an abundance right now where the shelters, they just do not know what to do and they are starting to end up going through that process. I think the point is to try to avoid that and hopefully to end up seeing if the animal is able to be re-adopted. Um, whether in Renee's care or whether it's finally being able to brought over to the shelter. Of course, once it's brought to the shelter, it's out of our hands. Um, and what happens with the dog after that point is it's nothing that we keep track of.
A question, do we have any policies on this?
Renee actually does a really good job in her reports and everything. I don't know what she has, if she's uh set forth a policy that we.
Well, yeah, it's like in a case like this, is there like a timeline where she has to hold the dog or animal or like give it up to her discretion? You know what I mean?
That's what I'm thinking. I don't pay rent.
Right.
I'm not kidding, you know, I don't, it mean to be a hard ass, but give it a couple of weeks and if it can't find a home, euthanize it.
And that's usually what it is. It's two weeks. I believe it's fourteen days that's in the policy. Um, in a normal year where the shelters would not be so full, technically what would happen is uh Renee would pick up the dog. If the shelter was full, then technically the dog would go to Oasis Kennels. But most of the time the people would go and pick up the dog from Oasis Kennels and of course, at that point, they pay the charge of what Oasis Kennels is. But while the timeframe when they would be there, if nobody comes back to accept those dogs, then the dogs is placed into a shelter. The town would then be liable to cover that two-week period. Whether it be at Oasis or whether it's at Renee's. I mean, Renee's goal is to get the dogs into the shelter um as soon as possible. It's just right now, the shelters are just so full. Um, that it's every single town and city is seeing the exact same thing. It's a hard time trying to get rescued dogs to get back into shelters. But yeah, there is a fourteen-day period.
I make a motion that we reimburse Renee Falconer for the one dog that's already been adopted and reimburse her for the second dog for another couple of weeks and it will revisit it at our next meeting.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, thank you. Uh, next, we have an update on 150 Main Street and the Cleveland Meeting House. Uh, 150 Main Street, Ron Wright came and looked at the at the furniture and stuff we have in there. He said, we've got a couple of items, some quilts and a he called a washstand that are worth, uh, you know, a hundred, a hundred twenty-five bucks a piece, nothing else in there is really of any value to him. He's got a guy that does uh smaller auctions that he's going to contact for us to come take a look. They might want some of that stuff, but uh, it doesn't sound like it's generating much interest. Uh, the Cleveland Meeting House is getting painted. It looks great. Um, I think they should be done next week, maybe.
Ooh.
Week after.
They are, I tell you.
The weather's good. They're going good.
Them boys are workers. They owe good credit.
They're doing a good job.
Yeah. There's a good chunk left.
Two weeks.
They're gonna have to vacuum the chips out of Raymond's corn on the other side. Take a little longer.
So the weather holds, though.
It will.
They are. It is amazing. Yeah.
I'm surprised how fast it's gone.
I'm, I'm going to think more towards the end of August.
Well, a couple of weeks, I think they'll wrap it up, probably. What'd you say, a week?
Next week.
And.
End of next week. End of next week, I guess, two weeks, alright.
And I asked Matt to reach out to the roof company to see what the timeline is. You know, we paid him a pretty hefty deposit and we've gotten nothing in return, so.
They've been contacted. Hopefully they will hear from us soon.
Yeah.
Any other questions on uh agenda item number six?
So Scott, did you look into the uh, did you have a guy come look at the furnace? What we can do with that?
He just recommend just, just sell it, just try to just post it. It's probably worth five hundred bucks, the furnace and the duct work, he thought. Nothing he needs.
So I was wondering, uh, what's the group I'm thinking of that does weatherization?
Nito or?
Nito or NECA?
Nito.
One of the groups does weatherization. Would it, I was wondering if they'd be interested in coming and getting it yanking it out of there for us. Your thoughts?
Um. Yeah, we can have Matt get ahold of them to see if they, if it's something they want. Um.
I keep saying NECA, but it's Nito and.
You know.
N E T O.
Yes.
So fun to use for.
I mean, I guess one other option is we could always, you know, take what we think is of value out of that house and put it into the garage over there and you know, try to find Coventry residents that are in need of something. But I mean, I guess it would also be easier just to give it all, you know, give it all to someone like Ron Wright or if this other auction, smaller auction guy makes us an offer on the stuff and we could put the proceeds of the revenue towards, you know, getting the asbestos removed.
I'm good either way.
I am too.
Let's look into giving the furnace away to Nito.
Okay.
And just a quick update on the historic preservation grant from the historic, from the Preservation Trust of Vermont. We're at the point now on the Meeting House painting that I can put in a invoice them for all expense so far. And we'll start getting that grant expended.
Oh, that's super.
Okay. Next up, we have the Orleans County Sheriff's Contract. It actually started in July first. July, month ago, so.
You read it, Scott?
I, I did, I, I glanced through it. I'm gonna get it in front of me right here.
It's, it's essentially the same as it was last year, thirteen hours a week at whatever the, whatever the rate was.
Yeah, it's just a thirty percent in- increase, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that was already covered in the budget last year when we put that in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
We budgeted it.
And they're already behind, correct, Matt?
Uh, we got nine and a half hours last month.
And the month before that, I think we only had like two.
Yeah, well, they screwed up that month, but this, they, they thought our contractors were corrected, right? The one with eight or nine. So there was some they, these forty wouldn't, wouldn't happen again. But I mean, we're paying less, I guess, that's, we're paying for nine and a half hours. We're not requiring, are they like a minimum number of hours? Well, there's, they, the contract says thirteen hours a week. But that's like a not to exceed.
It's, it's not, I, I think you're way high on your number, hours per week.
Is it?
Where are you seeing that? I think you're looking at more like
Thirteen a month?
Two to three, two to three hours.
So maybe it was thirteen hours a month or something like that.
Yeah.
Anyway, it was, it was only, yeah, nine and a half hours last month. Okay. But we don't have a minimum requirement. I, I guess, no, I don't see anything in the contract. It's just that, so.
No, I think it's up to thirteen and a half. When we have complaints, we ask them to do more. Um, have you had it? Many complaints, Deb?
No. Not at all, as far as speed and or ATVs or any of, anything of that nature. So yeah, so that was my comment. I mean, I realize there invoices is low, but I didn't know if that was still stipulation because I thought, aren't they supposed to be doing a little bit more monitoring of the Parkin Ride next to Martha's as well? Due to some instances that have happened down in that area?
That's what I thought from last year, wasn't it?
I think we kind of think we, in a sense, stepped away from that a hair because you got, uh, we were also trying to avoid them, uh, patrol on Route Five. So when you get, so when you get that officer down there outside the Parkin Ride, he's sitting there, is he taking? We don't want, I don't want to provide patrols for state roads, whether it's five, four, or any other one.
Okay.
I don't think we ever did set a require, I think we, you know, we stepped up our lighting a little bit.
Yeah.
We reversed the lighting. I haven't heard of a lot of complaints down there. I've seen a little bit of beer.
Yeah, I haven't either, actually.
No issues on Alden Brook with people speeding down there?
Uh.
No issues on Alden Brook?
Alden Brook's actually one of the fastest roads you're gonna find. That is probably our worst road for speeding. That's our highest density road too.
Yeah. I thought last year there was some talk about them putting more of those data, like speed data collection things. Or like a little sign that shows you how fast you were going. I thought there was some talk about that and I don't know, nothing materialized from there, though.
I think we kind of got away from that one too, I think. You know, riding around the state, from what I see, I think it's a great thing when I come into a town.
Oh, no, I don't mean like the permanent one. I thought the sheriff mentioned that she could like cart one around in.
I think we got away from it.
Okay.
Yeah, they're in the speed kind of taking a foot.
Yeah. I do like them coming into towns off a major route, you know, and it does remind you to go into fast.
Yeah.
Well, no complaints is good.
Yeah.
I actually follow a lot of people on that road and they think the speed limit's thirty-five because Newporthead is posted thirty-five, but once you hit Coventry, it turns to fifty.
Yeah.
I actually follow a lot of, that's my route to and from work in town and.
Do we need a motion to?
We need a motion to accept that, yes.
Uh, make a motion, we accept the contract as written by the Orleans County Sheriff's Department.
So move. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we need to sign that.
Scott. Scott, concerning it gets better.
Okay, table number eight. So number nine would be authorized town administrator for the use of the town credit card. Right, tell them you, yeah.
Opposed.
No coffee for you. Probably Scott has this thing.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, so just, this is Dave, the bar of the treasurer, the other cardholder. In the past, we've had the town administrator and treasurer on the card uh with two separate cards, but the same account. That way either one of us can uh transact town logistics on a small scale level. Credit limit is twenty-five hundred dollars. Typically, the only thing the treasurer buys is pre-stamped envelopes to mail tax bills and other stuff in terms of taxes envelopes, uh, and then the town administrator is doing the office logistics with that card.
Yeah, I make a motion that we authorize um Matt Maxwell for the use of the town credit card.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, next up, we have authorized Matt to replace Prine for the Vermont Leadership Conference. Prine has a uh planning commission event that night. You have a local concern to be for the sidewalk study, save night, so. Alright, one of them.
I make them.
Yeah, I do.
I make a motion to authorize Matt Maxwell to replace Prine for the Vermont Leadership Conference.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we'll re- reimburse the same, we'll reimburse your travel expense.
Okay, great.
Just keep track of your mileage.
Not the whole town.
Thousand.
Okay, next up, we have the fiscal year 2021 audit.
All right, your treasurer here to talk about this. Yes, we're back in 2021 fiscal year. Uh, this is almost done. We have preliminary results or draft results from our auditor Nathan Holly. Uh, we have the two perennial findings and what I'm bringing this up tonight is to get your feedback on how you want to respond. Um, the first finding is the one where he's, he doesn't really like that the treasurer has access to the bank accounts and access to the general ledger. And we've not been able to come up with a solution to this in the past. But what we've dealt with is, is the way we've mitigated it is for me to publish all the statements. Talk about it every month. Uh, but he's kept that on there. Um, I'm looking into the possibility that I hand off one of the duties. And the easiest one to hand off from a technical perspective is access to the bank accounts and signing checks. It's just a legal question that I haven't got an answer yet on whether the treasurer can separate himself from
It's just a legal question that I haven't got an answer yet on whether the treasurer can separate himself from the bank accounts and signing checks. Nothing, I've, I've done some research on it, but I'm gonna have to talk to our lawyer about it, just to, I'm not getting anywhere in the, in the statutes on that. I haven't found anything since I can't, I just want to make sure before we press ahead on that. What that would involve was, would, would be me handing off, uh, signature authority and access to the accounts to Matt. So then the town administrator would sign checks and download monthly statements and hand them to me and I would do all of the general ledger work reconciliation, all that stuff. That would, and I checked with Nathan, that would clear the, the decks with him on that particular finding. He'd be happy with that as a solution, but he cautioned, make sure that legally as a treasurer, you can do that. I'm, I'm thinking that the fact that I'm now an appointed treasurer probably is helpful in that, but, uh, more to follow as I pursue that. What I'd like to do is draft a response back to our auditor on that particular finding, saying, here's what we're doing right now. Uh, more to follow as we straighten it out. Yeah, it's just a kind of, it's a response, a formal response from the board saying, we're doing something, we'll let you know if it works out. The second finding was about reconciling accounts on the general ledger to the bank accounts at the end of the year and, um, it's something that's been a longstanding issue. I did it in fiscal year twenty-two. So I have a, a record of that, but this is fiscal year twenty-one where I was unable to get it done. So going forward, I, I think our response is, yes, we're doing that in the fiscal year twenty-two, we're doing it this year twenty-three. Didn't get it done in twenty-one and, uh, he understands some of the reasoning behind it. The, the, our accounts in Nemrick, uh, we did not get it, we're not allowed to start fresh in twenty seventeen when the prior clerk treasurer was removed. We had to build on that wreckage. So when you look at reconciling all those accounts against the bank accounts, it's a mess and we're still straightening it out, but we're pretty much there for most of it. Uh, I want to be clear, however, that the bank accounts reconcile every month. They have, since we took over in twenty seventeen. Nothing's gone missing. It's all there. The accounts reconcile and I give those to you every single month. What I'm talking about is a, is a process of reconciliation of the bank accounts against what's in the Nemrick records going back to when they first started using Nemrick somewhere around two thousand. So it was under the Peggy Rackliff originally and then under Cynthia Diaz and then Adam and now me. There's a lot of wreckage buried in that and it's taken us quite a while to sort through almost all of it, not quite all of it at this point.
Is that because you don't have a balance point?
Right. For instance, the general fund reconciles to the bank account at negative seven thousand seven hundred thirty-two dollars and fifteen cents. Not zero, negative seven thousand, that's like, okay, once you get used to that, wrapping that around that concept, you can do it every month. Uh, but now he, he also wants us reconciling AP, all of the special funds and like the SWIP fund, which was the original reserve fund, solid wastes. It's just a, it's just wreckage. I mean, it's nuts. So, you know, it's not like, you know, there's nothing new missing. There's none of that, but I assure you, uh, you're, you're looking at bank accounts that reconcile every month. It's the Nemrick records going all the way back, trying to get that stuff all sorted and then adjusted. Um, we're still working on it.
Are you ever gonna be able to make a journal entry or a correction to make it all zeros so that you don't have to carry a negative balance forward?
Yeah, he did give us permission to consult with Nemrick on some way to do that, um, without, um, because it's a, it's, it's a difficult issue because, uh, just a straightforward journal entry would cause, um, an injury that would, on the cash side of the general fund and that's not gonna really work, so. I owe a phone, I owe him sort of in a sense, a phone call to Nemrick to try and figure out, okay, what do we do about this within the Nemrick program? Because, you know, every month, it's the dilemma of the bank account balance is fine and reconcile is fine. It's this weird thing going on, you know, from Nemrick that we, we just, so, uh, more to follow on that. Uh, my proposal to respond to his finding is, uh, uh, an abbreviated version of what I just said. As you know, Mr. Auditor, we've been working on it all these years. We'll continue to work on it and specifically for a couple of the things I just talked about, here's what we're doing right now and here's what we've been doing since fiscal year twenty-two going forward. So it's kind of a formal statement. It'll come from you guys as select, as a select one, but um, my proposal is just to draft that, get it in front of you for the next meeting. Uh, either you like it or you don't. Uh, hopefully I'll get it to you like this week. So we can get it through the next meeting and get it to, uh, Nathan. He can finish up the twenty-one audit.
Okay.
So that in a sense was an update. Uh, more to follow as I get that to you. I, I guess I should point out, an alternative is to not respond at all, which is not a good alternative, but it is an alter.
Your first, uh, issue, that, uh, wasn't he stating years ago, are you replacing the assistant treasurer by appointing Matt to the position you're talking about? Is that the same issue that was Ben, the problem?
Yeah, I mean, in a sense, in a sense, that's, that's what we would be doing. His question, and it's a legal one, can the treasurer, uh, separate the position of treasurer from the signing of the checks? That's the, I haven't found anything in law that says you can't. But a little bit more homework needed on that. Okay, uh, next up, we have the approval of the minutes from July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
So move.
For, uh, July eighteen, twenty twenty-two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, other business, um, we have a press release for the new town administrator that you guys can authorize for publication. If you're happy with what it says.
Yeah, I thought it looked good, Matt.
Great.
And all David had a chance to read it.
I guess very excited, a little toned up.
Scott, do you make the motion?
Oh. I will. I make a motion that, uh, Matt's letter, uh, is acceptable to publish as, uh, the new town administrator.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, next, we have warrants. And then underneath that contracts for fall festival and EP warrants. And Kerry, if you want to talk about any of these fall festival documents, you can.
Can I say something you wanna know?
Nope, it looks like we got an invoice here from little Deb, a big win, and then it looks though, the one from Evansville Transitory is more than a contract. Does that need to be, this, somebody from county to sign that? Doesn't matter.
I don't think so.
And then we have a request here to serve alcohol that needs to be approved by one of you guys. ADA traffic control needs to be signed.
The, the alcohol is that, you know, two spirits says on there, so it's for the love of food catering, um, but they're the ones who did it last year.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And we don't know if Phil, Phil was gonna work out, reach out to ADA because he wasn't happy with the way they performed their duties last year. Do we know if, if he's had a chance? Does anybody know?
I don't know if he's had a chance to, uh, he was happy with the, uh, contract that was written before. He just was unhappy with the way they, uh, went about that.
All right, so I'll start off. I'll make the motion to accept the ADA traffic control, control contract, uh, for service agreement twenty twenty-two uh, in the amount of, was it four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars?
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then I'll also make a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, request to cater malt beverages, uh, for our festival. Uh, the license name is for the Love of Food Catering LLC for the date of eight twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two. The hour, the hours of, uh, beginning at twelve and ending at ten P M.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I need to sign that?
I think so.
It has a town city clerk signature block. So if it's in the minutes, Deb could sign it, but it's it's a Vermont state form, so.
If I need to, I can swing in there this week. If Matt has it, I can just sign it. Come check out the church.
Are you all right? Okay.
So one other thing on that fall festival, we had a request by a number of the, um, vendors to have the, their, uh, checks available that day. Isn't that correct?
Yes, we, I think some of them would have liked them ahead of time, but we had said we can have them there that day to hand out with the ban ADA traffic and.
That's what we actually did last year for some of them. Uh, what Martha did is we still had some who was missing their W nines. And as soon as on that day, they handed Martha the W nine and she handed them their check. I know I emailed Kerry today to try to get as many W nines beforehand. And hopefully at the next select board meeting on the eighteenth or the fifteenth, um, hopefully we'll have maybe most of the invoices where we can just issue checks all that night and of course, just hang on to them until that day and disperse them out.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Okay, so then, then we have, uh, if we could get a motion on the AP. Or do you want to review it first?
I have not, I have, to be honest, I don't look at them all. Do you, Scott?
I haven't looked at them either.
We're gonna need two signatures anyway.
Yes, but we can, um,
Approve.
If you can, if you want, you know, I'm not, it's a no pressure thing. If, if you don't want to, that's fine. Um, but I can't sign them until you do.
I can.
As long as you have a problem tonight, then David can go ahead and sign and then we just need to get either Scott or Phil to stop and then just place a second signature or we can just hang on to the warrants until the next board meeting and we can just submit them there for second signatures.
Yep. I can bring them up here. I'm just gonna get out of here and I can just look at them, see if Deb sent me the email.
So how's that work? Should we still have to pay the full price on the blades even though we have the credit?
Well, no, we got it, we're posting the full invoice amount, but then you should see the credit amount of like almost thirty-two hundred. So the amount we're paying them is only seventeen, seventeen forty-nine or something.
Oh, I just saw the forty, that, that number. I see that.
But I didn't include the voided check just so that you can see the other check was going good.
Thank you. Hey Scott, so that's, uh, pretty much, uh, industry standard, twenty-five percent return fee.
I think we could, I think we should actually call them and try to.
I do too.
Try to reduce that to ten percent, you know, it's, so the error was, they just didn't fit, but was it?
It was my fault. The, the, the actual error was my fault. What I'm questioning is, if I'm paying two hundred and twenty dollars in freight, I don't see where I should be getting whacked or a grand or twenty-five percent for the guy on the computer to say, hey, made a mistake.
We did reorder, right?
Actually, I ended up going through CAD. And I actually got the blades at a cheaper price. They weren't, uh, they were three foot sections instead of the four, which made no difference at that point, because I was desperate for them.
I think we should lose our freight and maybe at the most a ten percent restocking fee. Because they've only gone up in value since you bought them, so they're worth more now anyway.
Yeah, and I still, and I still didn't get the whole special order thing. So that, that's, uh, Kennametal's always been a product that that company has handled. So I'm not sure, and I've dealt with them for years. Of course, it was easier in Morrisville. If I had something wrong, I could go right back down and get, get the right ones. But at the end of the day, it just seems excessive for what it seems excessive and I don't see where it's a special order. There's gotta be more than one greater in the United States of America. This takes five eights bowls.
And they could re-drill them if need be, even though they're hard.
Okay, we'll look into that.
Yep, Matt, that's something you can do.
Yep.
But. So David, if you want to review the AP, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the AP and then I'll look at it tomorrow and I'll stop it and sign it. You're there, you're there tomorrow, Matt?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Yeah, we got a bunch of stuff from your side, Scott. So did you second that motion, Dave?
Most of.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, that's, that's all we got for tonight. Cool.
That was easy.
Good boy, eight minutes.
So much easier than having Barlow just rattle on and on and on.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
So move.
All those in favor? Good night, everybody.
Right.
I'll see you tomorrow, Matt.
Okay, thanks, Scott.
Thank you.